Oregon City Commission Order, color roll please.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell.
Here.
Commissioner Rachel Lyles Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Rocky Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Denise McGriff.
Present.
Mayor Dan Holliday.
Here. So immediately following the City Commission, we're going to have an executive session pursuant to ORS 182.6602E to conduct deliberations of persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. If you please stand in your meeting flag. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as strong. So under ceremonies, proclamation, and presentations, we have 20.140, updated tree removal, replanning and cyber repair process at the pool, Inter community Services Director Don Robinson.
Good evening and thank you very much for allowing me to come share with you our project. I'm very pleased to report that we have completed this project. We completed it last week. I hope you found it very before and after pictures there to share with you. I know you guys have a very busy agenda, so I'll try and be fairly brief with you this evening. Along the way, I believe we learned some very important lessons as we worked on this project. And probably the first lesson, the most important lesson, and the hardest lesson that we learned was that quite honestly, our communication, both internally and externally, was not up to the standard that I think Oregon City would want nor deserve. In order to remedy that, we've been working with internal communications specialists, helping us work through some issues, helping us identify better ways to work with each other and having your communication. We're also working with our own community communications, outside communications person within Oregon City to help us identify ways to work with our community a little bit better, make sure that they are receiving the information that they need and the reasons why we make decisions and how we go about making those decisions and then how we deal with the decisions that we make along that way. It's a, I'm sure you're all aware that we're in the process of now advertising for a new Parks and Recreation Director. One of my goals in my position as the interim director is to make sure that we have a smooth transition. That transition has to be smooth for not just the staff who remain, but also the new person coming in. We want to make sure that they have a way of communicating with each other, talking to each other, make sure that everybody's on the same page at the same time. I think that's an absolutely critical thing that we do moving forward and I'm hoping that some of the lessons that we learned from this project itself is one of the ways that we can ensure that we get it right next time. Wanted to share a little bit about some of the project itself. As you know, we planted 12 trees, three of them on the upper part of the plateau. That's a picture of one of those trees. You can see that it was about 3,600 pounds, roughly the size of a small car in weight. We did three of those trees there. We also did an additional eight trees within the sidewalk area, street trees. We replaced 700 feet of broken concrete with new concrete and then we replaced an old median parking strip with new concrete of another 700 cubic feet, so a total of about 1,400 cubic feet. The last tree that we planted was up in the front of the building. As you were to look at the front of it, to the right of it, apparently at one time there was an old fir tree that had been removed a number of years ago. We took this opportunity to replace that tree also. This is just a quick picture of the trees on the upper side of it that you can see. Like I said, they're rather substantial. We wanted to make sure that we were replacing our trees with ones that didn't just necessarily meet the expectation, but we wanted to exceed the expectation for the community out there. We wanted to make sure that people feel like they were getting a good product in the very end of it. Moving forward, probably the best thing that we can do is learn from our issues with this project. And moving forward, we have been working really hard to kind of implement some of the things that we've learned along the way. Now this next slide I want to share with you, it doesn't necessarily pertain to this particular project, but it does trees. And I would ask you not to bog down and try and read too closely all the verbiage. In fact, truth be told, this is a great example of what not to put on a PowerPoint slide. But I think the important message is I wanted to kind of share with you a little bit, moving forward, what we learned and how we've put it into place. Each of these thirds of this slide deals with the library and the tree that we had to remove as a result of Dutchella disease. We wanted to make sure and not repeat the sins of our past, so to speak, and do a better job of reaching out to the community. On the left, the left third, as you're facing the screen, that's from the city's webpage. That talks a little bit about the tree, why we replaced it, you know, how we're going to go about replacing it and why it was so important. The middle section of it was from our social media. As you can see, we had 474 people react to it or look at it, view it at that particular moment in time with 31 engagements. And I'm told an engagement means it's somebody that left a comment or forwarded to somebody else or something along that line. I'm not the most socially media savvy person myself. And then finally, there's a poster that we put up. We did this in a couple of areas. We had one over at the library, right out in front to let people know what was going on in case they happened to miss. Not everybody, you know, was on the internet, not everybody, you know, tweets or Facebooks or whatever social media they do. So we wanted to get the walk-ups and have those there. We also put one over at Pioneer Center because we felt that there's a lot of crossover between our customers at Pioneer Center and our customers over at the library. So we didn't want to miss any opportunity. The last slide I want to share with you is another one that just kind of shows going forward yet another project that we are about to ramp up on in the information. Minutes actually before you on consent agenda this evening. This is dealing with the floors over Pioneer Center. We wanted to let people know that we'll be doing change out in the floors. And so what we've done is prepared another poster and we've actually brought in a sample to show what the new floor would look like, what it will feel like for people so they can not be surprised, so they can see what's going on and so that they have an accurate expectation of what we're going to be delivering. If you go back to that second slide I showed you about the lessons learned, the second bullet down on that was simply put, we need to manage our expectations. That's something that our staff will tell you they're probably pretty tired of me harping on them about it at this point in time.
That means you're doing it right.
Well, I like to think so and I kind of hope so. But I think one of the things that we need to be sure and do is manage both our internal expectations and more importantly, our external expectations and your expectations of us. You need to know what we're doing, why we're doing it, why we're making the decisions that we make and how we come about and try and implement those decisions. So with that, I'm going to be quiet and I will be prepared to answer any questions that you may have for me.
I have a question.
Sure.
What are you going to do with the old floor?
Great question, and I will have to get back to you on that one. My guess is we'll be recycling in some way. A lot of it is in some pretty rough shape. Interestingly enough, when they built it, there was no subfloor on it.
Right.
It was nailed directly and so it doesn't even go to anymore.
Just there's a lot of places like, you know, Restoration House parts and places like that that will take that and they'll find somebody to sell it to that will use it in a house or something else.
Absolutely. The last place we wanted to be is a landfill.
Right. Yes, sir.
I'm guessing this photo is just showing this, the sample of the floor compared to the wood in the building and not where we're actually doing the floor.
100%. The floor will actually be in the.
So the carpet's staying, the floor is in the main room.
Right, it'll be in the community rooms and the craft room.
That's what I thought.
Anybody else?
I do. Just wanted to know, I had a comment already from a citizen about they were anticipating being able to take tap dancing lessons on that floor. And I said, well, I should talk to Kathy and see if you can get a tap dancing instructor in to do some tap dancing on that floor.
Certainly.
So that was a positive comment.
Excellent. I'm glad to hear that.
I just wanted to make a comment of how much I appreciate the size of the trees that you put back at the pool. I know I was going to be super unhappy if the trees we replanted, you know, replacing those large trees that came down were tiny. So hopefully the neighbors in that community who, you know, were mourning the loss of these huge shade trees that they have a lot of value and take, you know, they find refuge in the summertime and hang out on the lawn outside of the pool. We heard a lot about that. And so the size of those trees looks substantial, probably some of the larger ones that you can buy, so good job on that.
Yeah, anything bigger would have been difficult. As it was, it took five guys, a backhoe and a donkey to move those things around and get them into place. They were a challenge for us, to say the least.
There's always a crane.
Not a real donkey.
So my, no donkeys were harmed in the planting industry. Last comment, it has nothing to do with this particular subject, but I know people have been talking about a fenced dog park in Oregon City for a long time.
Yes.
And I've mentioned a couple of times that I wanted to put it in your head. Stafford Park would be kind of an ideal place for a dog park. It's literally right across the street from my house and.
It's not.
Well, it's not, it's sort of being used as a dog park now mostly. And if we were, and you wouldn't have to fence it on two sides because it's already fenced on two sides. So you cut it in 20 feet on both the Home Lane side and the Mountain View side. You've got parking, you know, you've got a four footer or a six foot fence or something that, you know, lets you in and it wouldn't cost a whole lot of money and it would satisfy a lot of people and it's down to have a place where they could go and use their dog off leash.
You know, that was a topic of discussion for the PRAC at their last meeting.
Okay.
One of the things that they wanted us to do was to set up as quickly as we can, at least some temporary fenced in sites. We're planning on taking a look at that one in particular because you're right, it does have two sites covered already.
Correct.
And then utilizing some temporary fencing, like snow fencing, for instance. It's not the prettiest, but we can put it there really, really fast, get people in there and have containment of those dogs.
Sure.
For it. The other one that I want to tease a little bit because I'll be back in a couple more weeks to talk about, Tyroneus Woods, and that one will have a permanent dog park associated with that when we get that park built this summer.
A fenced dog park?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Dan, just one more thing. Just because my, a little blight is going off in my brain about Stafford Park, I would go back and make sure that the deed that gave us Stafford Park doesn't have any prohibitions of anything like that. It's just one of those things to check because I know Roma Stafford had talked a lot about in her writings that I've read about her parents and wanting to give that land for a park. So just, I would say just do some due diligence and check that. There may be nothing in there, but it probably wouldn't hurt.
A little bit of precautions goes a long ways.
Exactly. Okay. Thank you, Don, for my case.
Mr. Mayor.
If I could just add, I think one of the questions that was directed at me had to do with the
disciplining of staff related to this incident. While we don't discuss disciplining of staff, I do want to let you know, the commission know and the community, you know, that we learned from this lesson. The very clear expectations have been set based on the review of how this was handled and documented as we went through this process.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Moving on, says a comment. Do we have any?
Just one.
Okay. Well, you know the rules, Father Tom. Mr. Gifford. I was just watching the Newsy Top thing on Netflix today.
To step up actually, back in the early 60s, I was more often referred to as Charles Manson. Times change. Mr. Mayor and City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford and I live in Oregon City. It's my understanding that our city manager was in receipt of an email that he forwarded to you from Bridget Daisy regarding an event next week and I wanted to amplify that just a little bit in case you missed the memo and for our listening audience. Next Wednesday, week from tonight, March 11th, from 6 to 8 p.m., there is a community meeting regarding the subject of childcare and early childhood education in Oregon City. Sounds a little fluffy, but let me back up just a bit and say that Bridget gave a presentation and her colleagues to, you know, I'm a commissioner on the Oregon City, on the Clackamas County Economic Development Commission. And after this presentation, I was, my eyes, I was woke. I was woke about the economic impacts of childcare, about the costs of childcare. And we had an in-depth discussion about the economics having to do with short term and long term, where you have, you have parents that can't afford to work at a job and childcare and they have to make choices or work split shifts. It's impacting the workforce, it's impacting the child. The longer term impacts is that with unprofessional or unsupervised children, they are not growing up as healthily and as socially adept as they ought to. And I just think it's a big deal for our community and I think it's a big deal for the economics of our community as well. And so I would encourage those of you who are able to attend next Wednesday, it's going to be at the John McLaughlin Elementary School. For those of you that don't know, it's on South End Road. I think most of you can find, they are asking to RSVP rather than rattle off an email address. I'd suggest that if we, if someone wanted to contact the city recorder, would that be the appropriate?
That'd be fine.
Yeah. Contact the city recorder at the, at the city and ask that recorder for the RSVP information. But I think childcare is a pretty important issue.
Thanks, sir. So anyone else for public comment? Signal move on. Everybody okay with the agenda? Yes. Okay. Then we'll move on to public hearings, 20-135, second reading of ordinance number 19-1014, adopting the stormwater master plan. As ancillary document to the comprehensive plan and the document numbers. Ms. Turway.
Thank you very much. The stormwater master plan identifies deficiencies, system deficiencies for drainage that are necessary to accommodate growth. At the December 18th hearing, the city commission approved the first reading of the ordinance for the new stormwater master plan and closed the record. The record was subsequently reopened on January 15th, so it remains open today. In response to some concerns from Commissioner McGriff, staff has provided an alternative stormwater master plan for the commission's disconsideration. The changes include additional language added to the executive summary that identifies how the stormwater approach ties in with the comprehensive plan as well as state and federal requirements. After hearing comments from the public, staff requests closing the record and moving forward with either the first reading of the revised master plan or the second reading of the master plan as it was originally proposed. There is a subsequent agenda item on the stormwater design standards. We'll talk about that in a separate hearing after this hearing. So we're going to do two votes again on this, even though they're related. And with that, we're here to answer any questions that you have.
Questions?
Would you like me to speak to the changes that I recommend?
Go ahead.
If you, if you've had a chance to look at it, staff highlighted and read, I sat down with not only the lovely John Lewis, but Ms. Turway and Ms. Robertson Gardner, and we came up with some language that was further massaged by John and myself. The reason I'm recommending that we include this is that it makes it very clear how our planning process ties in with the federal permitting process. Some people are visual learners, some people see things in charts. And we saw this chart that's on, on page eight of the summary that I thought was a clearer explanation of how our process works. It doesn't, it require us to do anything. It is just laying out very clearly and makes it very plain about how the process works. I mean, not everybody is going to understand the NPDES process and the MS4, but I think the language that we came up with, the four of us, makes it very clear how everything ties together. And I thought that that was appropriate to add into the master plan. I have no concerns about the documentation that we have for the standards, which is the second part of it, but it just makes it very clear. And I really appreciate the staff, particularly planning staff, working with me on this and coming up with some really clear language. And John too. And he had to agree as well. So I'm just recommending that we include that as part of the, the master plan in the executive summary.
Was that the, was that the only change?
Yes.
That was made for the revised?
Yes.
Did we receive any additional public comment based on the revised?
We did not.
Okay.
So I'll take either motion, a second reading or a first reading of the revised.
It's still a public hearing, so you need your comments.
Do we have public comment?
Nope.
Anybody out there wishing to comment?
We don't.
Signal, I'll close the public hearing now.
I'd like to move the first reading of ordinance number 19-1014, adopting stormwater master plan as an ancillary document to the Oregon City Comprehensive Plan, GLUA 19-0002, Legislative File 19-0001, as proposed to be amended.
Second. Moving second for discussion, color roll.
Wait.
Oh, Ms. Richter, first reading, I forgot.
Ordinance number 19-1014, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City, adopting the stormwater master plan as an ancillary document to the comprehensive plan.
Color roll.
Commissioner Denise McGriff.
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Rachel Lyles Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Frank, oh, excuse me, Rocky Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Dan Holliday.
Aye. On to 20-136, second reading of ordinance 19-1015, adopting public work stormwater and grading design standards. Ms. Turway.
Thank you very much. This proposal describes standards for the planning and design of stormwater conveyance and management systems. This, at the December 18th meeting, the commission closed the record and voted to approve this document. The record remains closed today. However, we have received, you can see four items, requests to be submitted into the record. Staff recommendation is to keep the record closed and to do your second reading. It's up to you if you would like to open the record or not. If you do open the record, then you would have an opportunity for public testimony.
I must have missed the January letter from the, from the tribes, unfortunately. I looked at all the other stuff.
So is there a motion?
So can you, can you repeat one more time? If we decide to open the record in order to include these, are we starting over on hearings, first and second readings?
Yes.
Is there a strong reason of why we would open the record? I mean, we closed the record to public comment.
No. We did receive these comments for both agenda items. Generally, they are more applicable towards the other one.
Okay, well, that's from November.
I don't, wrong opinion.
We've already done the first reading.
So they came in after the fact, so they're not included. They weren't, I didn't miss anything because they aren't in the.
Right.
Okay, okay.
That's right. Yeah.
So can we just move on with this?
I'd like to move the second reading of ordinance number 19-1015, adopting public work stormwater and grading design standards.
Second. Moving second, Ms. Richter.
Ordinance number 19-1015, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City, adopting public work stormwater and grading design standards.
Color roll.
Commissioner Denise McGriff.
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Rachel Lyles Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Dan Holliday.
Aye. On to PC 20-043, first reading of ordinance number 20-1005, amending the natural resources overlay district and approving file LEG 19-06. Ms. Turway.
Thank you very much. A wetland was identified with during the development process, which was not previously identified within our natural resource overlay district boundaries. The natural resource overlay district protects features through placing a vegetated quarter consisting of native vegetation. In response to citizen requests as well as a recommendation from the planning commission and the natural resources committee, the city commission directed staff to proceed placing this, the delineated feature within our natural resource overlay district. And so that's what we have proposed before you. Assistant City Attorney Carrie Richter is going to do some legal disclosures and then Senior Planner Pete Walter is going to talk about the project in a bit more detail.
Richter.
A public hearing on a land use application has been scheduled for tonight. A staff report has been prepared for this application has been made available to the public seven days before this public hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to the proposal. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report. The hearing procedure the commission will follow is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are shown on the chart right there. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out a speaker's card and give it to the city reporter before the hearing. Speakers will proceed in the order in which their card is received. You should fill out your address on the card so the city will notify you of its final decision. For the record, please begin all testimony stating your name. Testimony and evidence should be directed to the approval standards. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, please identify and discuss those standards. A person may submit written test, written material while, while we are, while the public record is open. Any materials received by the city staff during the time. Any materials received by the city staff during the time period in which the record is open will be placed in the record. Written materials submitted during the public hearing must be presented to city staff in order to become part of the record. If a person intends for PowerPoint presentations, oversized poster boards, reports, pictures, or other exhibits used in their oral testimony placed in the record, copies must be submitted to city staff while the record is open. If the city commission makes a decision to, in which you disagree, any issue that you wish to appeal must have been raised for the city of this, raised for the consideration of the city commission. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence that allows the city and all parties to respond, the issue will not be deemed appealable to the state land use board of appeals. In addition, the failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designated response, the issues preclude the, an action for damages in circuit court. Now we are going to open the record. You've already opened the record, I think. Does the commission have any ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest, bias, or any other statement to declare? And have you all visited the site?
I have a statement. I am very familiar with this particular proposal by the city. I have visited the site on many occasions. I have not visited recently, but I'm very aware of it. I also have a question after everybody makes their declaration to staff about timing.
Anybody else?
I've visited the site long, quite a long time ago, at least a couple of years ago.
I've been to the site numerous times over the last year and a half or so, working with the developer on the project. Never discussed this particular issue.
I, excuse me, I attended the most recent Kanema neighborhood, neighborhood association meeting, which was held at the Oregon City Library. This topic did come up in conversation because this was in the Kanema Neighborhood Association, or in their neighborhood boundary.
I also attended that same meeting referenced by Commissioner Rachel Lyles Smith, and in addition, I watched the planning commission work their way through this the other night.
Anyone, anyone wish to question the commissioners about these disclosures?
Before you, I forgot to say that I did attend a meeting where Pete did present this for the first time to the Kanema Neighborhood Association, and I also was on the planning commission when this was referred to staff to work on this particular project, and that involved my question, Laura. It wasn't just with this develop, that development. I, my recollection is the planning commission recommended that several years before that cottage development occurred.
Let's take this in the proper order, so let's do the disclosures, and let's take care of that, and you can ask your question.
Anyone in the audience wish to question these commissioners about these disclosures?
Signal, Commissioner McGriff.
So the timing, you, you said that this was recent. As I recall, this was, this went back a number of years that the planning commission, which included myself, Mr. Mahoney, Mr. maybe, Mr. Johnson, asked for this to be looked at two or three years ago.
It is not recent, if I said recent, I apologize for that. I think I, yeah, anyway, this came up and it was presented to the city commission in relationship to your goals retreat, when we set this, goals that were in for this biennium. The recommendation of the planning commission was to place the, the wetland that was identified within the N-Rod and then also do broader reviews of vegetated corridors around the city or re-inventory the city. And so we talked about that at the goals retreat, and it was determined that due to staff capacity, that we'd focus on our comprehensive plan, and then out of that, in the comprehensive plan, it could talk about re-inventoring the city or doing those other broader long-term projects as well.
Okay, well, so I recall we had a request by a resident from Kanema that we'd look at this, and I recall that was either my first term as planning commissioner or second term as planning commissioner, where we asked this to be added to our planning commission work session, so.
What is your point?
The delineated feature was found with the cottage home development.
Right.
That was in, I believe, twenty seventeen.
Right, and it was before that. So I'm just, I'm just trying to set the timeline that this isn't something that just came up. This has been under discussion for a long time.
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dan.
Ms. Turway. Ms. Walter.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm just going to give you a few details about this wetland, as Laura mentioned. If the wetland is added to the natural resources overlay district map, as was originally proposed by staff, we'll add a fifty-foot vegetative corridor to the wetland, and that would result in any future development being subject to the provisions of that ordinance, and we'll explain what that means in a little more detail. The planning commission on February tenth voted four to zero to recommend approval of this with the following modification, that the amendment should not affect any portion of five-one-four Fourth Avenue, Tax Lot twenty-three hundred. I'll show you what that looks like, with the following rationales which are given in the staff report. The planning commission felt that it impacted a disproportionately large percentage of that property. Only a limited number of property owners are affected. They wish to allow future development of that property. They felt that the proposal was unfair to the property owner and that it would reduce their property value. Here's a slide that compares the original proposal with what the planning commission recommendation is, and you can see that the fifty-foot vegetative corridor does not affect, on the right side, would not affect five-one-four Fourth Avenue, but it would affect principally the city right-of-way and the property outlined in red, which is the site of the cottage home development, which already has development approval. So any new impervious surfaces proposed within the vegetative corridor would have to go through some level of land use review, whether that was driveways or homes or any, anything like that.
Can you go back to the second reading?
Yeah, we can refer back to this.
I'm confused now, because, so five-four, oh, five-fourteen only gets access off of Fourth?
I believe so.
Correct.
Yeah.
But the two grayed-out streets are just plied but not built.
Unapproved, right.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. And this is a graphic of the actual approved wetland delineation, so the wetland was only delineated as to the very edge of the property, and this actually states that it does appear to go off-site. However, without a, an approved delineation for the off-site, we cannot, you know, add a fifty-foot vegetative corridor beyond what is delineated, so we can refer back to that. I'd like to show you what the ownership is. Here you have three owners, Karen Blaha, who owns Tax Lot twenty-three hundred, that's highlighted in yellow. There are two underlying lots of record there, four and five. You have Area Touch LLC, which is the cottage development, that is four lots of record, and then the Goodwins, who have two lots of record. This is a typical Kanema block with four lots of, eight lots of record in it, and an alleyway in between. So, so go ahead.
Back one more time. So did Area Touch get a, a vacation of the twelve-foot between lots six and seven?
No, no, no. They don't, so that, I know I've shown that as, as blue there, but it's actually not supposed to be blue. It should be just right-of-way white, yeah.
There's no homes placed in that location either?
Yeah.
Okay, but they're building on both sides of it.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
So why aren't we requiring a vacation at this point?
The conditions of approval for that didn't require a vacation of the right-of-way. The cottage development can be approved when you have at least ten thousand square feet of property, and subsequently, the conditions of approval were for lots three and six to be combined and lots seven and eight to be combined, but the entire site.
So theoretically, there's still a twelve-foot piece there that we could run an alley through all the way down to Fourth Street?
There is.
Yes.
Theoretically.
Theoretically.
There is.
Thank you.
Yeah. Briefly, the goal of the natural resources overlay district is to avoid, minimize, and mitigate for any impacts to natural resources, in that order of priority. The overlay district allows the land uses that are permitted in the underlying zone subject to certain conditions. And it also talks about something called a highly constrained lot of record. So if you have a lot of record which has essentially an area that is less than a thousand square feet with dimensions of less than fifty by fifty in the overlay, there's a provision that allows you to develop up to three thousand square feet within the buffer and have a reduced twenty-five-foot setback from the edge of a protected feature. And that's there to assure that you can still develop when, if the overlay is really burdensome on your property. In this case, you know, we have a forty percent lot coverage maximum, even if there was no overlay district, so just mention that. This is a little complicated, but I wanted to show what the underlying lots of record looked like with the location of the wetland and the proposed vegetative corridor. So each lot of record under the zoning, R-six zoning, which is a residential zoning, would be allowed to have one main residence as well as one accessory dwelling unit. So if you have two lots of record, hypothetically, you could develop up to four units of property, subject to other permitting requirements like historic review board, et cetera, because there's more than one development code at play here when you, when you propose development. And as I mentioned, there's a maximum disturbance area allowance for those highly constrained lots, and Tax Lot twenty-three hundred consists of two lots of record. So that would be permitted. The intent is not to completely preclude development, it is just to protect development and balance it out with the natural resource protection. So that's the planning commission recommendation, was not to apply the vegetative corridor to any portion of Tax Lot twenty-three hundred, for the reasons that I spoke of earlier.
Hey, Pete, so just to be clear, you're, you are saying that Tax Lot twenty-three hundred is a highly constrained, but still allows development?
Yeah, that's a good question. It's not a separate lot of record right now, it's one tax lot, but the owner could have the option to re-recognize it through the tax assessors office as a separate tax lot, if they wish to, and develop it under the provisions of its highly constrained lot of record. Or they could keep it all on one tax lot with, and just build on the back part of that lot, you know, back part of that tax lot. So there's a variety of options there, depending on whether or not the vegetative corridor is applied. But it would allow a significant portion of the vegetative corridor to be encroached upon with mitigation. So if you, if you propose, say, a thousand square feet of impact to that vegetative corridor, you would have to do two thousand square feet of native plantings on-site, because that's the mitigation ratio. And if you couldn't fit those plantings on-site, there's provisions in the code for you to plant off-site and that kind of thing. So it really is a, a way of disincentivizing too much encroachment into the vegetative corridor and mitigating for that impact that might occur.
But it doesn't preclude development?
No.
Okay.
Okay, before we do any more from here, we're going to open the public hearing, and I have three speakers, Mayor Neely and Karen Blaha. Karen, come on. Saves time, we'll take you to a time.
I'm going to request the mat be put on, if I could borrow a pointer.
Nope, sure.
John gets to be the man.
Let's see, I don't seem to be getting it.
Maybe? Is it on?
It should be.
Well, I, I guess I can.
No, no, let's do this.
Side, on the, on the.
Do you want to look at the other eye or the remaining eye?
Here it is.
Oh, it's very good, thank you. Appreciate it. My wife says I am mechanically inept. She's right. The planning commission recommendation is to have none. They didn't go for the twenty-five-foot, uh, buffer was discussed with the property owner, and that's been rejected. My preference would, of course, been to have the twenty-five foot. I'm, excuse me, I'm Doug Neely, sorry about that, Oregon City. I am on the chair of the Greater Oregon City Watershed Council. I would like to propose an alternative, and that, I would like to see a continuation between the vegetative corridors here and here, and I propose having a ten or fifteen-foot strip extending from this point on down, connecting with the vegetative corridor that's, that's on the right-of-way there, to provide habitat for the creatures, but also for shading opportunities on that side. This is a, this is a cold water street, wetland that is supplied, is supplied by springs, it's cold water, eventually that water hits the Willamette, and during the outmigration of juveniles, the Willamette gets very warm, and it would have provided some degree of refuge in the Willamette River. So I'm going to suggest to reduce vegetative habitat that would make the connection between that on the upper portion of two-fifty and that between, on the, on whatever street this is, 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 is not yet built, and that's my suggestion for you all to consider.
Thanks, sir. Blaha.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name, and commissioners, my name is Karen Light of Blaha, and I'm the owner of the five-one-four Fourth Avenue subject property. My comments will be brief because I respect your time very much and I understand you have the planning commission file. Regarding that file, I do urge caution concerning a Kanema resident's submission on February eleven and twenty-one, following the planning commission hearing. Those comments are written with falsehoods, allegations, and absent of fact. Today, I am primarily asking you for equal treatment of neighbors, fair use of my property, and sustaining my property values. Please don't misunderstand my brevity. My position stands, and I would gladly restate all the details if you wish. The planning commission gave this situation thorough scrutiny and consideration, resulting in its recommendation to exclude my property. I support the planning commission's recommendation, associate my remarks with it, and ask you to accept it. I thank you sincerely for your consideration.
Thank you. Paul Edgar.
Her first stick. Won't be six.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll give you one.
Thank you.
Off the end.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Paul Edgar, from Oregon City and Kanema. I wanted just to have you reference the Kanema National Register Historic Nomination Document, and on page two, when you flip it over, it gets into the, we, there's a section here that talks about water use, and then it talks about water containment, and it's within the water containment area of this document, this part of the history, is that you'll see that Kanema, the description of this area as a wetland for millennia, because this water that comes into here comes right out of the historic Kanema Water Works, and it flows down the hill, and you notice the line up there on, at, on Lot four-fifty, and it's just perpendicular. The reason why it flows into that other property, so it, it's not just ending there, it, they did not go into the other property and, and figure it out just how, what the extent was there. Now, the biggest problem here with this property and this wetland is that it flooded. It flooded, John, the time when you were at my house, or I remember when Coffee Creek flooded one time, long time ago, and, and you were over there.
Ms. Richter, you're, you're testifying, the commission.
But John was there, and I'm trying to reference a date, because when, when Coffee Creek flooded over. And it goes through multiple right-of-ways, but what it did, they backfilled over the top of this pipe, and they've created a dam. And when the dam fills up with water, and it can't go over that property, it goes over Miller Street, and it creates a public safety hazard. That's a fact. Now, all I can say with this is that historically, it's, we've had a wetland there, we've had a vegetative corridor, and then in our documentation, there are pictures. And some of the pictures were provided, and they show a rendering, one of the pictures, some of the pictures is like from Jim Nacida, he presented it, and it shows this area, the whole area, it is part of the document, and it's one wetland, one continuous area. And then you see what has happened after the fact. And so this type of, of deal, and then there's these other pictures that were presented by part of the documentation from Dennis Anderson. And they show the, a, a, a big valley where the wetland was and how it's been all cleaned out. And you can imagine that this is that basin now. And then you can see from another picture here, where it looks from immediate property on the other side of Karen Blaha's.
Mr. Edgar, your time is up.
It's, you can see that, how deep that hole is. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Sweet.
Hi, I'm Chris Sweet. I live at 514 Fourth Avenue, at Karen Blaha's property. I'm actually her daughter. And I, I'm not sure how long I've been there, maybe 10 years, but I used to live at 702 Fourth Avenue in Kenema, just down same, same side of the street, if you can put back up where this shows Karen's property at 514.
You tipped that mic a little bit. Thanks.
But even, what I want to bring up is, the picture on the left, is that wetland, it's taking up half of her backyard. The backyard, like, can she build, can we build a shed back there? Can we have the dog back there? What can you do when you take half of that from her? I also have lived there when the flood of 1996 came around. I didn't live there, but at 702, which is on the other side of that whole picture there. It did not flood in her backyard. It did not flood down where I lived. There's a creek there that runs pretty much during the winter and then nothing in the summer. There is a culvert pipe that was put in, not by Karen, by the owner of 606, I believe is what his property is. Not the current owner, but the past owner that makes our creek in our backyard flow out down to the culvert and down into the Willamette. I'm not sure where Paul thinks her backyard flooded. It didn't. I would have been there if there was a flood and helped my mother, because I was living down the street. So it never came up. But right now, she's talked about adding onto her house so she can age in place. This is cost prohibitive. She can't go, we can't go in the backyard. It goes almost up to her garage. It's like useless. Can we mow it? Can we plant? Can I have raised gardens down there? Can I keep working on those? Can we, I don't know. It just, I really think you need to stop and think before you take. And she's been there 25 years, so anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else have public testimony? Okay, then, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Can I have a question? Was all of this testimony from Mr. Edgar and the other folks available and presented to the planning commission?
There's one exhibit, which is in your packet, that came after the planning commission, which is the email, the 21st, I believe.
Yeah, but.
But I think the substance is largely the same.
Right, right, okay. So I'm gonna say this first, and that is, I take very seriously the job the planning commission does. And I think in my, in my terms of office here, we have overturned the planning commission only twice, that I recall. So those folks get to do that work, and to be honest, and I've said this many times, I would never serve on the planning commission, because it's just not my thing. And it's a lot of hard work, and there's a lot of reading, and there's a lot of detail and that sort of thing. So if this went through the planning commission process, and they put, put it up to us to, to approve, that's where I'm gonna, that's where I'm gonna be.
So does anybody have any questions, concerns, comments?
All of the above.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Well, like every Kenema issue, they're never simple. And yeah, there probably is a pipe that was put in there, God knows when, and maybe it even serves to help keep the 514 property drier than it normally would be. But regardless of that, I watched the planning commission struggle with this, and I think the fairness piece, I believe, was that the cottage homes has been built on this wetland. And why would this person not be allowed to? And I'm just trying to recite some of the concerns I watched. But the question I would pose tonight is what are the implications to this citizen in the use of 514 Fourth Avenue if we choose Mayor Neely's alternative versus the planning commission recommendation? Can someone explain that to me?
Well, if there were only a 10-foot vegetative corridor around the wetland, but it continued to extend to touch the right-of-way, the impact area of any subsequent development would be somewhat smaller.
On the 514 lot?
Yeah. It, you know, depending on hypothetically where they want to put a future structure, they can't put it in a wetland. If, if we, if you approve the vegetative corridor as proposed originally, they would be subject to the requirement to further delineate the wetland if and when they decide to develop, because currently there's no delineation, and the code requires that you delineate the onsite feature so that you know exactly where the edge of it is. That could expand the vegetative corridor if the wetland is bigger than we know, we think it is. Or it could shrink it. We don't know, because we don't have a delineation. But in general, shrinking the width of a vegetative corridor, whether it's now or in the future, is gonna minimize the amount of mitigation area that you have to provide, and it's gonna bring the development closer to that wetland. We only regulate the vegetative corridor. We don't regulate the wetland itself. Yeah.
The only thing I would add to that is, see the overlay on the map. If you want to put a building in the overlay, it opens up the overlay district. If you want to place your structure outside the bubble, then you just have to do a simple exception to show you're outside the bubble. So if the bubble is smaller, it would give space to place buildings outside the bubble without opening up. But once you touch that and further delineate it, it'll get much bigger.
Right.
So did I understand the planning commission correctly when they took this property, 514, out of the natural resource overlay district, but left it within the wetlands? Is that what they did?
They chose not to apply the vegetative corridor to any portion of tax lot 2300 as of right now, so, based on what we know.
And to review Mayor Neely's proposal, what does he state, what, what does he want
to do? What's his proposal?
As I understand it, he would not apply a 50-foot vegetative corridor from that edge, but bring a line parallel across the property and then add a 10-foot buffer to that. So that it's about, the extent of the vegetative corridor is about 40 feet less than it would be.
So, I hate getting into this, this area of subjectivity and saying, well, you have seven feet here, and it's 12 feet there, and it's 19 feet somewhere else. I mean, the code says 50 feet, right?
Yes.
So there isn't really any provision for anything other than that? Yes or no?
It's a policy decision on what you want to apply the overlay district to, but no, our vegetative corridor width.
Says 50 feet.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. McGriff?
Well, I'm not sure where to begin, but I will try. I have a lot of questions. I reviewed the planning commission material, and I will agree with you, Dan, that, you know, only people.
Mayor?
That the planning commission is a hard job. Having done it, been staff, I know what hard work goes into it. But I'm puzzled by the fact that I don't understand the rationale. I don't see any specific findings about why their decision is what they made it. So, for example, you know, they talk about a limited number of property owners are affected. The proposal is unfair. I don't see a clear and objective standard in our code that says something is fair or unfair. I don't see any information about how this would reduce the value of the property. I, I just, I'm not sure how they got there, even though I reviewed it. I, I sat the whole time there puzzling and scratching my head. What I am, what I have concerns about is that just saying that the, that the wetland doesn't apply doesn't mean that the wetland isn't there. So it doesn't go away.
Right.
So how does that make any difference? I mean, does that mean that somebody could completely go in and obliterate it? I understand where Karen is coming from, but I'm concerned that we are isolating a specific piece of property. Obviously, you know, in hindsight, maybe that development that's on the other side shouldn't have been developed on a wetland. I, I know that people have known about this, this wetland for at least the time that I've lived here. It's been there. It doesn't have to be wet all the time. They are sometimes dry, sometimes they aren't. I'm just, I'm just not sure how we got to where we are. I've read the staff report, I've read the staff recommendation, that makes sense to me. I can see your logic and your thinking and going down and you're looking at all the standards. I can't find that on the planning commission side. I don't see how they got to where they got to, based on any criteria. I, I can't say that I find that what they're recommending, I'm not saying I disagree with them, I'm just saying I can't find that it's supported by findings of facts or any conclusions of law. It's, I, I just have a hard time, because to me, it doesn't quite pass the smell test. So I'm trying to get there. So maybe you can help me get there.
The direction from the planning commission was not to provide revised findings. They basically deliberated and, and made a decision after quite a bit of discussion. So I would, I would entertain further discussion about that.
Commissioner Smith?
Well, I happen to agree with Commissioner McGriff. I struggled with this one, because it did seem a little bit like maybe the planning commission was, rightfully so, I understand, very empathetic for Ms. Blaha and her property, and, and, and the fact that the cottage development happened next door. It seemed unfair that they developed next door, and now this is being kind of thrown, thrust upon her and her property prior to this, because, due to the development that happened next door. But can we, really quickly, with the development next door, there's been some statements here that I think we should clarify. Statements made that the cottage homes were developed in the wetland. That was a statement that was just made. My understanding is, we just said, development doesn't happen in wetland. So I assume they developed in the vegetative corridor, and they mitigated it via in rod specifications.
There was no natural resource review on the cottage development, because it wasn't within the overlay when the development was proposed. So they, the wetland itself was regulated by Department of State Lands, and possibly the Corps of Engineer, but the vegetative corridor.
Didn't exist, so therefore they didn't have to abide by it.
So they could build right up to the edge of the wetland, and even cantilever over the top of it with their decks, which two of them do. And the Department of State Lands knows about that.
Is that legal?
Apparently it said.
Okay, all right.
And, but yeah, the wetland itself, the delineation that is provided on, is good for five years, and as long as they adhere to that and don't encroach upon that, or cut or fill, or do anything beyond what they are already doing, they're, they're okay.
So, let's be clear, okay? So this, when the cottage homes were being developed, this wetland was not delineated.
Right.
And there was no buffer?
Right.
The well was delineated, but there was no buffer.
But there was no buffer, because we hadn't added it into the natural resource overlay district. So I think that's the point the planning commission was making, is, is Blaha bought her property 25 years ago, she's owned it all that time, she has no any restrictions, and all of a sudden, out of the blue, here comes government again, saying, okay, we're gonna do this to you, and there's nothing you can do about it.
So I, I gave this a lot, you're right. And when I gave this tons of thought earlier, I mean, yours, the city commission is essentially asked, being asked, which mountain do you want to climb over? A property rights mountain or an environmental protection mountain? And the priority of that depends on who you ask. If you ask, you know, if you ask Mayor Holliday, he's gonna say property rights. If you ask, you know, maybe Mayor Neely, he came up and, and was trying, he serves on a watershed group, he may, he may pick environmental. I don't know, I'm just using that as an example. The property has a known wetland. We know that if the property owner wants to develop it on that property, then she is going to have to deal with the existing wetland, no matter what, regardless of what we do with this, with this in rod. So I do think it would be nice to address some of the concerns about what, what happened if the in rod, I mean, there's questions of what they can and can't do, but maybe as a property owner, maybe that doesn't affect our decision. At the end of the day, I came up with that, we have three options. We can adopt the entire in rod with a potentially a delay in its effective date to give Ms. Blaha time to move forward with some development. That's one option, if we were trying to do something in the middle, if she wanted to develop her property, but that one's questionable. We could rip off the Band-Aid and adopt the in rod entirely, knowing that the wetland extends onto the property. Or we can just accept the planning commission recommendation and know that any development is gonna have to deal with the existing wetland that we know extends onto her property. So the planning commission one is really, I think, kind of right in the middle, trying to be a compromise between totally ripping the Band-Aid off and going one direction versus.
What about number four?
What's number four?
The proposal by Doug Neely. That's number four.
Yeah, I wasn't sure what to do with that.
Once again, I, I come back to the point that I don't want, I don't want our code to be piecemealed and changed here and there for specific properties. If we have, if we say it's a 50-foot buffer, then it should be a 50-foot buffer. If the planning commission says, it's not fair to this property owner, because this is a brand-new 50-foot buffer that hasn't, me and cheese had the property for 25 years, and the property probably goes back well over 100 years, I, I just don't see that as an option. I think we got either follow our, follow our code or follow the planning commission. I don't want to be doing, you know, five foot here, 10 foot there, 20 foot there for each individual thing. That's, the reason we have a code is for it to be objective, not subjective.
Can we, is it possible to do the exception for the 514 property, but have the full in rod go into effect if the property changes ownership?
Well, there, that's the same problem.
We wouldn't know when the property changes ownership.
Yep.
One of the, I mean, that's, that would, it would have to be some kind of, the city would have to check in at an interval to know whether the ownership had changed.
And the other problem with that is, is that does then subject the, the property to a reduced value? Because if they're gonna sell the property and then this takes effect, how do they, how do they judge, you know, what the property's worth?
Well, it makes the new owners go into it with complete eyes open as to what the current situation is of the property, would be the only benefit, but yeah. Doesn't sound like that's a good option.
Anybody else?
About dedicating it and to a, an organization that would take care of the wetland, that way she'd get some money out of it. Take a tax write-off.
Well, I mean, it's important to remember that, that the property is still developable. It's still gonna be developable for residential uses at the densities that are currently available. There will be some development restriction because of the existing wetland that we haven't delineated yet.
Yeah.
And so we just don't know what that delta difference is.
Well, I mean, it's important to remember that, that the property is still developable. It's still gonna be developable for residential uses at the densities that are currently available. There will be some development restriction because of the existing wetland that we haven't delineated yet.
Yeah.
And so we just don't know what that delta difference is. But there will be, they still get four, she will still get four units today and if this takes effect. It just will look a little different.
And even with the in-rod?
And with the in-rod.
Commissioner McGriff?
Well, wouldn't the four units, I, I, I don't know if I find that believable that you could get four units on there based on the zoning and the setbacks and all of that? You might be-
I haven't done set, I mean, I, we haven't done, you'd have to comply with, you'd have to comply with the H R B too. I mean, I'm not sure about-
So you're just saying that based on the base zoning, this is what could, not that it is?
Correct.
Sure, okay.
Okay. Somebody have a motion?
Well, I like Doug's suggestion. So regardless of whether it's causes, it's, it's in the middle, in my opinion. And I would support that.
What is she supporting?
I support Doug's suggestion and recommendation from Natural Resources Commission and his experience on, on the Greater Watershed Council.
I don't think that was the National, I don't think that was the National Resources Commission recommendation. I think that was just-
No, I'm saying he's on the commission.
Oh.
He's on that group. And he's, he's studied this a lot. I'm empathetic to Karen's concern. But I can't go the entire way. Again, I, I'm still on quandary with the decision. I guess at this, I'll, I'll move that we adopt the suggestion, um, and you can give them the specific numbers made by Doug Neely at this meeting to reduce the boundary of the, uh, the vegetative corridor.
If that's the way the commissioner was gonna go, we're gonna need a tentative decision. We'll have to come back with revised-
Let's see how the motion goes.
Understood.
Right, so yes, I under-
Clean that up.
Yes, subject to revised-
We can't adopt ordinance number 21-005 tonight.
Subject to revised findings from the staff and, uh, his, and a map and everything that goes with it.
Second. Seconded for discussion?
I'm gonna say one thing, and that is I reiterate that we have a process for a reason. And to try to relitigate every decision the planning commission makes here and make minor changes is gonna be untenable. I think the planning commission did the best job they could with the information that they have. And they considered both the natural resources aspect and the private property aspect. And I, having driven around there, I, I honestly, I don't see, you know, the nexus. You know, the critters that are gonna live in the swamp are gonna live in the swamp. The critters that visit the swamp are gonna come visit the swamp. I have deer, coyote, um, elk in my backyard on a regular basis and I live right in the center of the city. So, um, I'm just not sure what this actually accomplishes in the long run, um, setting aside another 10 or 15 feet.
I wanna ask a question of the attorney. If we were to adopt the proposal as put forth by Mayor Neely, what's the implications to the property owner and her ability to build in the future back there?
I, I can't say, the, the, well, the natural, we don't know where the wetland is. So we don't know whether or not the wetland's gonna occupy that whole 10-foot of buffer that Mayor Neely is proposing or not. But theoretically, Ms. Blaha ought to have more flexibility with Mayor Neely's proposal.
More flexibility than the flexibility the planning commission gave her?
No. Oh, I thought, I, so on the spectrum, there's the planning commission's most flexibility, Mayor Neely's middle flexibility, uh, original proposal-
Less.
Less flexibility.
Okay.
Sorry.
So would the wetland still have to be delineated?
The wetland has to be deline, will be, have to be delineated at some point.
At some point in time, okay.
Because it will touch the in-rod.
Okay.
Is there further discussion? Call roll, please.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Rachel Lyles Smith?
No.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Dan Holliday?
No.
So, so that's a tentative decision. We'll return at the next meeting with revised findings for your consideration.
On March 18th.
On March 18th.
So... Before we blast through this, let's take a five-minute break.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Rachel Lyles Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Dan Holliday?
Aye.
Motion carries, moving on. 20-131, second reading ordinance number 20-1004, mending Oregon City Municipal Code Title 12, Section 12.16.040, camping prohibited. Acting Chief Davis.
Okay. It's funny how Jim always seems to be gone.
Can we just make a motion?
It, it is for the second, second reading. The proposed recommendations were made to clarify, interpretation shall not apply to Oregon City camp post and to allow the city manager to grant an exception in limited circumstances. This was approved, uh, after the first reading.
I just had to take a chance to throw it in the bus.
He needs to get some practice.
Seconded.
Motion seconded for discussion? Call roll.
Wait.
Oh, second reading.
Ordinance number 20-1004, an ordinance of the city of Oregon City, amending the municipal code Title 12, Streets, Sidewalks and Public Places, Section 12.16.040, camping prohibited.
Call roll.
Commissioner Denise McGriff?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Rachel Lyles Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Dan Holliday?
Aye.
20-130, resolution number 20-03, modifying Oregon City Parks and Special Event Fees, Mr. Robertson.
Well, I would say a long time ago, C, but it really wouldn't have been that long ago. Uh, thank you very much. I'm sure you know, uh, Mr. Waverly with me this evening. First rule of presenting I learned in presenter school was always bring somebody smarter than you are to the table. So John will be, uh, that person for me tonight. Staff received bits regarding restroom rentals, portable restroom rentals for our special events. Uh, the cost of the increases on those porta-potties was, uh, pretty significant. We did take the information to the Prac to review with them. They made some recommendations. Their recommendations were to increase the costs. And I wanted to say as a pass-through to the customer, but I didn't really think that was appropriate for porta-potty discussion, so it's just, sorry, I'm working hard tonight.
Really good.
We needed the comic release.
Thank you.
Doing my best. Uh, along with that, we also were recommending a, an increase in the overall service associated with that, a 20% increase, um, to, to over that, to account for the staff time that it takes to coordinate those facilities be brought in and, and delivered and serviced and cleaned up and removed in timely fashion. Uh, while it doesn't sound like a giant task, it really is much more cumbersome than one would actually think it would be. One of the things that Prac wanted to know right off the bat in our discussion with them is what constitutes a special event and how many special events do we have in a given year? Right now, we have about 20 of them on the books for this upcoming summer. Uh, we asked that everything, um, that fits kind of within those categories, over 101 people, or if they're gonna be setting up tables and chairs and canopies beyond what we already have, or, um, if they're gonna be, you know, bringing in caterers, they're gonna need flaggers or police officers or those types of things. All typical, um, tips to us, it really is a special event as opposed to a church picnic or a family reunion or a child's birthday party, which would only be a, a shelter rental. We wanna make sure that there's ample restroom facilities for all the participants, not just the ones that are coming into the park for the special event, but also for all the people who are coming from the community that, that rely on that park to use it on a regular and daily basis. So we wanna be sure to, to have those restrooms available to them. Believe it or not, one of the other concerns, as you'll notice on exhibit one, was what constitutes an ADA restroom from what is a deluxe restroom? And, and that became a kind of lengthy discussion with the Prac and there was some speculation, wow, maybe it's the size, a deluxe is a little bit bigger than, than a standard and, you know, the ADA is bigger than the deluxe, or maybe it has the soap dispenser, the hand sanitizer in it. Well, it's none of those. It really comes down to age. So a standard and a deluxe are the same model. One is just newer, the other one is older. The older ones end up on construction sites, the newer ones go to special events and different things like that. What I discovered is it's a lot like, uh, going to a pizza parlor. One pizza parlor is a, pizza's a large, the next one is a giant, the one is a family, but they're all 18 inches. So it kind of depends on who you talk to and what the, the standard becomes there. Um, it's really important to note the asterisk, however, at the bottom of the, that slide. The city does receive a discount of $50 to $60 per ADA unit and $15 to $25 per deluxe unit. And that's based on how many of the units that we're renting at, at that particular time for that particular, um, activity or special event that is going on. That, um, is, represents a, a direct savings to the customer. We're not adding that, you know, we're not capturing that discount just for us. We share that to the customer. One of the things that makes it real easy to take a look at is to really kind of break it down, um, as far as what might a typical special event look like, um, under the current rules and, and fee schedule and what would, um, the proposed fee schedule do for, do for two people, um, that would be coming, you know, through? So, uh, in the column on the left, current fee schedule, you can see that it's exactly the same until you get down to the portable restroom fee based on 425 people. That would be one ADA restroom and two, um, deluxe restrooms at $350 we're proposing that that- would be coming, you know, through? So in the column on the left, current fee schedule, you can see that it's exactly the same until you get down to the portable restroom fee, based on 425 people, that would be one ADA restroom and two deluxe restrooms, $350 we're proposing that that fee go to 559. None of the other fees associated with special events are we proposing to touch at all. Those would all stay exactly the same. The other piece to this, however, is our cancellation policy. Under the existing policies, people who cancel more than 14 days prior to the event, receive a rather significant refund back, and people who are less than 14 days lose a fair bit of money. The suggestion of backing that up a little bit to make it a full month lead time allows us an opportunity to re-rent that space out. Right now, if somebody were to cancel two weeks in advance, the chances of us re-renting that space, finding a new tenant for that time slot, is pretty thin. This kind of gives us more opportunity to do that. And then the, you know, within the four week time period, it's, again, it's a rather significant loss for the customer themselves. Does that happen very often? No, does not happen very often, but it does happen from time to time. We had a, most recently, we had a person that wanted to do a surprise wedding at the top of Waterboard Park, yeah, it would have been a proposal and wedding all at the same time, wrapped together, and he was, you know, proceeding forward with it, and then kind of got, I don't know, bad signals from the control, and backed off.
It was a surprise.
Cancelled it.
I can see the person going, you want to do what?
We can tell you some stories, it just kind of happens out there in the world of parks and recreation. Anyway, that's what it would look like under the old, under the new scenario, and again, that's based on 425 people at Wesley Lynn Park. In the end, Prac recommended the fee increase as identified on Exhibit 1, and I want to clarify one thing about Exhibit 1, when we set that out, we discovered that we had a math error in it, it was actually a spreadsheet error, and so, are you looking for yourself in the audience, is that what you're doing?
I saw Neely in there.
Yeah, Doug Neely's in that photo.
I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, I see him.
So anyway, we did have a math error on that, so what you have in front of your screen is the correct numbers. We made those corrections, and Lisa, through magic, was able to make it appear on your screens to show you exactly what it would be.
So I'm confused, Dan. So if we go to the...
Exhibit 1?
Exhibit 1, in my packet, under portable restrooms, it says the current fee, the vendor quote, and proposed fee increase. Are you saying those numbers are not right?
On the screen, they should be correct.
You have a paper copy as well in front of you.
Yeah, that was in the old one.
When we sent out the original, the number, the white hand column was not correct, and so we made that correction, and I apologize.
So the numbers on my screen right now are correct?
Yes.
Okay, so here's my question, if the vendor's quoting 227.95, and we get a 25% discount...
That would be after the discount.
If that's after the discount, then why are we charging another $53?
That would be the 20% that we're recommending increase to account for our time as an indirect cost.
I'm confused, because it's a deal where you're going to do something at Clackmont Park, you say I need four restrooms, I would imagine either the event person or somebody on city staff calls whoever it is and says I need four restrooms, and they need to be here, and they need to be picked up there, what exactly staff time is involved other than maybe a five minute phone call?
They're taking that over, apparently.
What?
We do that.
Calling the...
We do that.
Renting the porta potty.
Yeah.
Well, you don't have to, because you haven't done it for two days.
Well, but I think more importantly, you know, I think our costs need to reflect, you know, the actual work involved, and I know that if I, you know, am doing quote for a customer and it takes me 10 minutes, I'm not charging them 10 minutes of my time in the end invoice, because it's just inconsequential, and I don't see that 20% actually, you know, just covering costs. It sounds more like to me like a little backdoor profit margin.
Well, I don't believe it's a backdoor profit margin, we took a look at all the different logistics associated with it, and it is oftentimes more than just a phone call, to get, we usually are sending staff down there, meeting the truck, making sure that they're delivered in the right places, occasionally, we have to tag those down to the ground so they're not tipped over, make sure that they're all secure, we're continually having to call back, make sure they're picked up appropriately and on time, coordinate cleanings in between sometimes, or coordinate cleanings during the events themselves, or work with people to do that, make sure that everything is taken care of.
But why is that our job?
It's not.
Okay, Commissioner Smith.
All right, so as being a person that's planned a huge event in this city for 20 years, which by the way, I think this, part of my question is, when did this change?
2018.
Because this was never, this was never the process.
Yeah, I believe it was, and my friend here, Jonathan can clarify, but I believe this policy went into effect in 2018.
Right, which just so happens to be the year after I was off the commission, it just happens to be the year after the Pioneer Family Festival ended. So here's my concern, I think some of these are valid, I actually spent most of my afternoon, which by the way, there's so much information that should have been in this, because when you read this, when my first look at this agenda item was special event fees, and I'm like, oh wow, there's a lot involved in that. But in terms of the staff report, it only talks about the restrooms, only because you're adding that piece, I get that, but I had to basically want to track down the full application that I was used to filling out in the past, to see what, how that changed, I wanted to see what the process from the last couple of years has changed, and it's changed dramatically, which I think some of it's for the better, and the reason this is, and I think this is actually a topic for another meeting, it's something that I think we have, should have been talking about probably for the last decade, how the city interacts with community events, part of it based on fees, but part of it based on just budget and all of that, because of issues with downtown, barricades and all this, and how we have really essentially killed most of our major events in this city because of how we have changed this process. It could have been fixed, it could have been worked on for a long time, but we need to figure out as a city, when that's a priority to do it. And what I mean by that is, I've talked about this for years, we need to have, if we think there's sanctioned city events, which most cities have sanctioned city events, we have to have a process for that, that has to be built in the budget, and we shouldn't be charging this stuff, if we have a priority to do that, we haven't done that. And so for 20 years of doing a festival in Oregon City, no, the parks didn't call the porta potties, now I understand, you know, the event would, you know, fill out the paperwork for the park and do all that detail, and they would facilitate that whole piece, and bring them down and rent them. Now I get that, so I guess I'm wondering how we got there, and what the reason was for getting there, there's probably a reason, I have a couple ideas what some of the reasons are, however, just on the basic cities that I looked at, no one does that. So did we base this off of someone else? Because anyone that plans an event knows that you rent the park, the event brings, rents the equipment down, and that's checked off by the city, and that's done. I don't really understand how we got here.
I wasn't here during 2018, but I will ask Jonathan.
Which is probably...
Yeah, no, I think that we worked with several, you know, we looked at several different agencies and theirs, and we've actually received a lot of compliments.
Agencies in terms of who?
Different cities, who, you know, and they're...
What cities do this?
No, I mean, this is our own special event, and not everyone's going to do everything the same, I mean, there's going to be variation.
There's a reason for that.
Yeah.
Because some things work and some things don't.
To get a little closer to that piece, when did this come before the city commission?
It never.
This major change?
No, it never did.
Because I don't recall it being in there in my history.
I don't know when the whole event process changed.
I'd have to go back and research.
The porta potty issue?
No, the whole thing, the thing, I think this is...
I would like to bring it back and go through the whole thing, because I have so many issues, once I look at the permit process to bring up.
We will be more than happy to bring it back for you.
Okay.
You made a argument with that?
No.
Can I mention my comment?
Commissioner Law Smith.
I just want to make sure that when we bring it back, you can address my concern. My concern is on the resolution, that there is the last whereas clause, gives the city manager authority to adopt portable restroom fees and drop box fees based on updated vendor rates each year. I wasn't aware that we were, offense, Mr. Conkle, I wasn't aware that we were allowing the city manager to update fees without coming to the city commission, and that was a question I had, asked an email, and it never got resolved, so I've...
That was a, try to answer that one, Tony?
Sure, then I'll follow it.
That was a recommendation that I had done, that was based on past experience with the city of Ashland, and how we were able to make some adjustments, that didn't require occupying a lot of your time when it was just some pass through, costs directly associated.
Well, we, you know, we could do something similar, if the commission is uncomfortable with that, for example, when we do a geologic hazards review, on the land use fee schedule, we charge them the rate that we have the third party doing the review, so there could be market rate plus 10%, 20%, whatever we come to as a decision there.
Yeah, I think I had asked if this, if we did this with any other fees, and I never got the answer to that question, so I guess I'm interested to know, you know, like, is this a one-off situation, or?
Well, I am like you, Commissioner Law Smith, and this has nothing to do with our current city manager, but I always look to see the things that we do, what the unintended consequences might be, five years, 10 years, 20 years down the road, and no one is immune from having an employee who is bad, it happens in every city, and so I agree, I think fees, fee increases should come before the city commission in a resolution like we do for other things.
Yeah, it just surprised me.
So let's bring this back, we're not in a hurry for this, are we?
I want to bring the whole process back, not just this issue.
Yeah, so this specific item, so the costs have increased for us, so we have several special events that we're in the process of approving, and we're hoping to, just the porta potty side of it.
So my understanding is that we are essentially losing money right now by not...
We're on this part of the hill.
Right, but because of the increase in the cost of porta potties.
So can we immediately just recover our costs and then review the entire process later?
I don't have any problem with that.
I have a couple of questions, though.
Commissioner Smith.
So we don't know how we transitioned, I know we know how we transition, so what was the decision maker from going to event contracting their own facilities, and then the city taking over, what was the rationale in that?
I'm going to have to go back.
Well, I know you don't know, but he knows.
Sure.
How did we get there?
So why do we, why do we control the porta potties?
Because that's never been the case.
It depends on the events, because I mean, some events will have their porta potties donated.
So we're non-consistent on events?
I'm saying that some events would have like a porta potty donated, so if theirs was donated, then that's, you know, we'll work with them.
What if it's half off? What if they contract with another company and they donated 50%?
Yeah, and we have had situations where we've had porta potties left at a park for well over a week.
I'm just asking what the rationale was for the city making the phone call to bring porta potties down when that was never the process? That was, for 20 years, has never been the process. So how did we change?
Let us come back with that information for you.
Okay, because you were on staff when that happened, and I know that, so I just wonder how it changed. I know that wasn't the process, and it never has been. So my question is, yeah, is there variables for, you know, groups to come back, plus in terms of, yeah, it's donated, and then that, then the city doesn't do that work, and it's just taken off, which is one scenario, I don't even know why this is in here. But the whole thing about the business license process and all those things, and whether or not the event has to get business license from every single vendor, which I get, but do they have to actually fill that out in an application, which it looks like you do? There's so many things on that new process that I want to look at.
Okay.
We'll be happy to bring that back, Dan.
Let's bring that back, work session in April.
But in its simplest form for tonight, can we choose to recover our costs only, not worried about our additional markup, just our costs, if they're going to be...
Or let the event write their own porta potties. The way it always has been.
Yeah, I'm still confused about that.
I'm not willing to do the 20%.
I don't understand why city staff should be responsible for cleaning and maintaining the porta potties while they're on site.
No, that's the job of the event coordinator.
The event coordinator or the company, the resolution to the problem of porta potties being left in a space for longer than they're supposed to be, again, is the responsibility of either the event coordinator or the company, and they both should be known that, you know, they get 24 hours after the event's over to pick up their stuff, and after that, it's going to be 50 bucks a day, or 100 bucks a day, or whatever it is, to come get their stuff, and if you give them an incentive to come get it, they'll come get it.
Write it into your standard operating procedure, here's the fee.
So let's bring this back to the work session in April, and did you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make the motion, just to at least recover our costs, not disregarding our handling charges that we chose, let's recover at least our costs, or break even on that, cost of the rental itself.
So the middle column?
Yes.
The vendor quote?
Sure.
Second.
Move and second, further discussion? Call roll.
Commissioner Denise McGrath?
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Rachel Lyles Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith?
No.
Mayor Dan Holliday?
Aye.
All right, we'll come back at the next meeting with a revised resolution.
So we're at Resolution 20-04, Modified Oregon City Parks and Recreation Camp Activity Fees, Mr. Robertson.
Absolutely, we're having so much fun, we'll do it again.
This one's easy.
I like to think they're all easy. In case you haven't had the opportunity to meet Rochelle, this is Rochelle, Andrew Holm Parsh, she's our aquatic and recreation manager, and she'll be playing the role of the person smarter than I for this presentation. Staff, please, we believe from what we could see in our research, this fee was last reviewed in 2005, so it's about 15 years ago. When I first came on board, one of the things that I took a look at was these fees, and I directed Rochelle to begin taking a look at these, and I instructed her to use two different methods in looking at these. The first method was to do a comparison of the fees that we charged to the, both the direct and the indirect expenses that we have for the program. The second method is to take a look and do a comparison to our surrounding jurisdictions, North Clackamas Park and Rec District, Westland, Lake Oswego, and so on and so forth. What she discovered in those methodologies, both of them found that we were way behind as far as what our fees were charging. The fees, when they were set up back in 2005, had an inflation factor of 3% built in, so we were able to add 3% every year as inflation went up, we were able to match it up to 3%. Unfortunately, our costs went much faster, much higher, much faster than that 3%, and so we need to come back and take a look at that. Again, staff did present this information to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee at the January meeting, our recommendation to the Prac was to increase the fees associated with these programs by 40%. That 40% increase would bring us in line with the surrounding jurisdictions, and we can provide a list of those for you if you like, along with, also bring us in line with what our crew costs for offering the services are. The concern that the Prac had was that was an awful big bite for the consumer, 40% increase in just, you know, one summer. So their recommendation, and staff agrees with this recommendation, is to implement it over a two-year process, so it'd be a 20% increase this year, and a 20% increase next year, as it went through. If you take a look at the, at the charts up here, I want to point out that there's two little asterisks associated with that. Based on patron feedback, they requested extra hours be added to the Rivercrest and the Pre-K Hour camps, and so we did do that. We did not make any adjustments to the aquatic camp, so those are true when you want to do the math across, or the 20%, for instance, that's what it works out to be. So if you were to sign up your child for one of the programs, the aquatics, last year, it would have been $61.75 for that week-long camp, this year it would be $74.10. If you were a non-city resident, it would be $81.75 up to $94.10. There was a cap established... Uh, there was a cap established, I believe that was back in 2005 also, that said that, uh, resident rates would never be more than 20%, 20 dollars less than non-resident rates, or maybe that was backwards. Resident, non-resident rates should be no more than 20 bucks more than a resident rate. So we are not proposing to make that adjustment at all. Um, this depiction, uh, is kind of an indication of what is considered best practices within the Parks and Recreation field now. Uh, you can see the, the bottom part of the triangle, the community benefit. On the left, you see no cost recovery. Uh, no cost recovery or subsidy, or full subsidy for those types of events. Moving on up, you have community and individual, and then as the pyramid narrows, more and more, uh, recovery is recommended within that till you eventually get to the top. And that's a reflection of the narrowness of the user group serviced. We believe that this would fall, I believe this would fall more in that individual community, which recommends no subsidy uh, for this one also. Another question that the PRAC had for us was, how's our attendance going? What's the percentage of resident versus non-resident? You can see from, uh, this chart that our residents are averaging about 74, 75% resident versus non-resident. Uh, we do maintain wait lists for these, and the, the pre-K, we had 162 total spots available and 120 of those spots filled. It does say a two-person waitlist there. That's because these are weekly, spread over the course of the summer. Some summers, some weeks are much more popular than other weeks, and so we do tend to get little waitlists based on those individual uh, things. So those, when you look at the waitlist, that's like an aggregate over the course of the full summer. Um, but you can see still that we're, you know, up into the, in most cases, you know, upper 90% occupancy rates uh, for those classes and 75% for the pre-K. Frankly, a lot of people kind of look at this as a, kind of a nice break for their kids and an opportunity to maybe have, I hate to use the term daycare for their kid at a lower rate, but that's sometimes how it's used. Um, so with that, staff recommends the adoption of the proposed rate changes as presented and recommended by PRAC, 40% spread over the two-year period.
Move to approve.
Second.
For discussion?
Just want to say this was a very thorough report. It was very clear and understandable. I thought it was great. Thank you.
The other thing I would say is that I have an old saying called boiling a frog, which means you don't spend 20 years not raising rates and then you raise them by 40%. I realize this is not your fault, but I need you to get that in ahead of your people, that we have to regularly annually look at these kind of rates and increase them in small amounts so that it doesn't turn into a big thing.
I couldn't agree more.
Okay. Uh, motion and second call roll, please.
Commissioner Denise McGriff.
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Rachel Lyles Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Dan Holliday.
Aye.
All right, thank. Go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you for your consideration. Appreciate, uh, your work for us this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, uh, Mr. Conkle, before we move on to this item 20 dash 145, um, I spoke with the, uh, the local project manager for the construction company that's gonna do the demolition of the armory. They're gonna come out and take a look, uh, their, uh, initial, uh, assessment, uh, a week from today on the 10th. Um, so that's gonna give us a little bit of time to look at the other stuff that we've been talking about. So I, I'd like to move this off to the next meeting, to the, the second meeting in March, uh, to have the discussion. He indicated to me that they're, they're not in, in, you know, in a rapid fire hurry to get out here and get this done.
Can we have a conversation with the commission? Because you're referring to the Adair buildings.
Well, that, that's part of what I'm referring to, but yeah, the fact is, is that I would, I would like to have the, the conversation about the Adair buildings. We wanted to have it in the context of the staff report in which it was not, uh, not in the staff report. So I want to give the, the staff, uh, and the construction company time to give us that information so that we can have that discussion at that meeting. I think that was what Commissioner O'Donnell was asking for, was that we include the Camp Adair buildings in this discussion, and it didn't get in the staff report.
Hell no. Well, what I was asking was, I didn't want to walk into this meeting tonight with everybody thinking we're gonna discuss the armory and at the last moment throw in the Camp Adair buildings without public notice.
A separate.
So.
No, it didn't happen.
That's what I'm asking for, that if we are going to consider that and look at the cost implications of that and this community reaction to that and the possible financial savings of doing it at the same time, let's have an open, visible conversation.
Right, that's what I asked.
And let's publish it ahead of time, not, not to Commissioner O'Donnell wanting to get the Adair buildings in there on his own. He didn't.
I, I would like to have the two, build, two projects, while they are on the same site, they are not the same thing. The armory is one thing, the other buildings are something else.
Well, the problem with that is, is that, um, the Camp Adair buildings have been shown by Chipo and Restore and other folks that there is no inherent value in those buildings anymore.
How is that part of this agenda item?
We're talking about it now, so we're talking about it.
Talking about the armory.
I know.
Two separate things.
It's not two separate things. If you take it to its logical conclusion, which is.
There's just not a logical conclusion. This was not on our agenda. I, this is the first I've even heard of the Camp Adair being, buildings being part of this. So how did that even become an issue? And you kind of slid it in there without even mentioning it. You mentioned it as a category, as armory building, and then it now realized.
Which is why I asked to move it to the next meeting so that we could have a chance to have that information. The point is.
Wow.
If you'd stop interrupting me.
I won't.
That the construction companies are even mobilizing on scene, and anybody who knows construction knows that about 20% of construction costs are the mobilization of equipment and manpower. So if they already have those things on site and they're literally 100 feet away, there is a possibility that we could save a substantial amount of money when we're gonna demolish the, the Camp Adair buildings because they're gonna have to come down at some point.
According to you.
My screen just went off, so I, I can't. It just went away, but, um.
Commissioner McGriff.
Thank you so much. I, I don't know, I guess I have to log back in here, but it just, it just went to nothing. Um, I also submitted some info, some, uh, comments to, um, uh, to our city manager about the, uh, Camp Adair, not, excuse me, about the armory. And my biggest concern has to do with the abatement and the fact that I have familiarity with level ones and level twos, and I know that just because you've got a building, it doesn't mean that there's not off-site issues. So in my understanding, and Tony, could you please clarify this, is that we are not paying for the possible demolition of the armory. That is being paid by others.
Right.
The issue with the Camp Adair buildings is completely a different topic, and if that's something we are paying for or thinking about paying for, to me, that is, that's completely different. And I, I do not want the two things commingled regardless of whether somebody's mobilizing on site or not. They are separate issues as far as I'm concerned. So I'm not gonna support throwing them in together.
Hang on.
But they can be consecutively discussed, but not mixed up. Because they're not really the same.
Mr. Conkle, so the answers to the, to the questions that you asked, uh, the guy from the Oregon Military Department, you didn't get an answer today, right?
I did not.
So again, the answers to your questions, we don't have yet, so let's move it down the road to the next meeting, and we can have that discussion then.
But we do know that they're paying for it. We're not gonna have them pay for demoli- demolishing other buildings. They have nothing to do with.
But the point is, if we can, if we can negotiate with the company that's already coming in to demolish the armory, there, there is a likelihood that we can save a substantial amount of money because the mobilization costs and the demobilization costs are the same, no matter if they're taking down one building or three buildings.
Well, we don't know how many buildings they're taking down, because as far as I'm concerned, they're taking down one.
But Tony, could you kind of go over some of the things that, that Commissioner O'Donnell had concerns about and also I had concerns about so that it's just on the record and that the community who's out there maybe at home watching knows kind of where, what our thinking is or what our concerns are with the armory building?
Okay. So I, I received, uh, two emails over the weekend asking just for some clarifications about the armory building. One was who owns it? Uh, the Oregon Military, the, the city of Oregon City in 1949 did a quitclaim deed, giving the property to the Oregon Military Department, after which the armory building was constructed on that property. It's its own separate tax lot. As part of that quitclaim deed, there was a condition, a reversionary clause that says if the military department ever stopped using that property, it would revert back to the city. Um, after they stopped using it for five years or they abandoned it, they had one year to remove the building. If they did not remove the building, it would become the property of the city with part of the reversion. That's about the extent of what the quitclaim deed says. How that reversion happens, we're gonna have to have discussions with them. There was a question about, um, um, you know, what are, are there any documentation on the existing building condition? So what, what we've been told verbally is that it had an, uh, interior firing range. Um, so there was lead contamination in the building, there was asbestos in the building, and there was, um, mold in the building. Um, that being said, the condition of the building is, is very deteriorated, um, as well. So any remediation of those environmental factors would not make the building habitable. Additional work would be needed. Um, uh, there was a question about would we, what, what kind of documentation would be provided, um, for any environmental impacts outside of the building, so with the soil or anything around the building. So, um, I don't have the answers to, um, how they made their decisions as to which option to do, demolition, demolish the firing range, keep the building, keep everything. Um, there is a cost implication to each of those three that are identified in the staff report, and I do not have any information related to, um, the, whether there was a phase one done, a phase two done, and the extent of any of those reports that might have been done.
So could we expect to get that information before it, within the next two weeks from the Oregon Military Department?
I can continue to make my requests.
Okay.
I, I think we have an obligation to get that information.
Oh, I agree.
Because we don't, you know, we've got citizens walking around up there. We don't know if the, the, you know, the soil is contaminated. If it is, we want to make sure we fence that off so people are not there. Uh, we don't know if it's been blowing. I mean, we don't know anything, and I think we need to safeguard our community for one thing, by getting the, which you definitely trying to get the information so that we know, because I think safety is a, is a critical factor when you've got mold, lead, and asbestos for one, for one thing. So we, we need to know that before anybody goes in and does anything. And then obviously, we want to make sure that whoever they're hiring is licensed to do that type of remediation because that's a very specialized field, and not everybody's qualified to do that kind of work.
I do want to let the commission know that as a property owner, of which we are not, we don't own the building, we don't own the property, it's, it could, it's literally come in and apply for a demolition permit in an over-the-counter Site 1 land use application, which just really looks at, is this part of a master plan or something like that? So while I, I could be back here in two weeks, I do not know the timeline.
Sure.
That the military is moving under.
Black that, Laura.
Okay.
Let us know if you see anything or.
Well, have they applied for the permit, demolition permit? From my understanding, they have not applied, but they've certainly asked, asked the questions and then transmitted the application forms.
And we do have the right to ask this as the adjacent property owner, because whatever's going on there can affect our property.
Well, we, we can ask.
We can ask the questions, and I, I, and I think the Oregon Military Department will be forthcoming with the answers. And if, if in a few days you haven't gotten that answer, I can make the same phone call I made last time, and I'll talk to the venture general, and we'll get the answers we need. So, um, is there, let's just go ahead and continue this till, uh, the second meeting in March.
Do you want a motion?
Good, I, I do need some clarification. What am I? I brought this forward as a request from the Oregon Military Department about the armory. Now, does the commission want to have a discussion about, um, why am I drawing a blank?
Here, here's the way I see it. I posed a couple of questions in the email to you, as you well know, and those questions were specific. What will be the condition of the land if, if this building were to be removed? And, you know, I want it to be free of contaminants, and what documentation did they have? And do, and may, and ensuring that Oregon City in fact does take possession of the land. Those were the three questions. Those are very simple. The Adair building discussion, from my point of view, is yes, there's gonna be equipment there. Do, do we want to pursue demolition of the Adair buildings? Now, I know it's a separate issue and it can be severed. It can be severed in conversation if it comes up as part of this, and a motion can be made to pursue one and not the other. It can be dealt with individually, but it's an intelligent discussion to have because if in fact the, the city chooses to pursue that and there's a, a substantial savings, that's what management is about. That's what this commission is about. Whether you pursue that or don't pursue it, or whether this commission votes to do that or not, a separate issue. The presence of information is not harmful. In fact, they may respond and say, we have no interest in pursuing anything outside of our dedicated ownership task. It's just a discussion. It can be severed during that discussion.
I agree.
Sounds good.
So I think you have your direction.
Do you want a motion to continue this?
I think so. Commissioner McGriff, will you say something?
Yeah, I was just asking, do you want a motion to continue so that it's official, it's on the record?
Sure.
Okay, I would move that we continue the discussion regarding the armory building, uh, that's outlined in a report 20 dash 145.
But that include information on the costs associated with the removal of Camp Adair buildings if we can make a deal with this construction company?
I prefer that be a separate motion. I'm not including that as part of my motion.
Sit here and have someone make a motion then.
So if you want that, I don't want that part of my, that's a separate motion. So if somebody wants to second that and we sever the two, I'd like to be separate discussions.
Silence.
So second my motion so we can get the armory discussion going.
You're not gonna second that one either.
Okay.
In my mind, dealing with it initially as a one business matter, we can choose to pursue all of it or none of it. So I would put it forward as one motion. At the time of discussion, this commission can vote and say, I want to pursue the armory, I don't want to pursue Adair, or I don't, I want to pursue both. It's that simple. I don't need, so it's, it's all part of the same discussion because the costs will be there stated out as line items. Have the discussion and, and vote as you will. So.
Is that a motion, Commissioner?
Yeah, the motion is to pursue the accumulation of costs as quoted by the state, and they need to be separate costs and line items in terms of demolition of the armory. And if possible, if they're interested in demolition of the, of the Adair buildings, and make sure those costs are stated separately. And what savings we, well, they can't talk to the savings. We have to get a separate estimate from someone else to see what the savings would be if we pursued the Adair building separately. That's a long statement.
I think I get the gist of it.
I got it.
You got the gist, okay.
I'll second.
Okay, moving second for discussion?
No harm in future discussion.
Call roll.
That's what it is.
Commissioner Denise McGriff.
No.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Rachel Lyles Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith.
No.
Mayor Dan Holliday.
Aye. Motion carries. Anybody have a pulling thing from the center unit? Hearing none is your motion? Move to adopt.
A second.
Second.
Call roll.
Commissioner Denise McGriff.
Aye.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Rachel Lyles Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Rocky Smith.
Aye.
Mayor Dan Holliday.
Aye.
Moving to invigoration. All right, then we're gonna adjourn, adjourn into executive session. Let's take.